Good afternoon, everyone. I'd like to welcome you to the Salina City Planning Commission. And we're just a couple minutes late, but we're going to go and get started now. So the first item on our agenda tonight is approval of our summary minutes of our August 1st meeting.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir.
I approve -- I move that we approve the minutes of the August 1st regular meeting.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the minutes from August 1st. All those in favor, aye please?
Aye.
Aye? Any opposed?
Aye.
Motion carries. Bringing us to our first public hearing item, which is Application Z-17-5 filed by the Salina City Planning Commission requesting a review and amendment of Article 7 of the Salina zoning ordinance, rezoning to a planned commercial district. This has been continued from our July 18th meeting to allow for public comment and input on this proposed text amendment.
As commissioners are well aware, we just exited a study session on this topic. We had some discussion and dialogue.
Dean?
It is not, but now it is. So we had some discussion, dialogue, and we are of the position that we are not ready for Planning Commission action on the current draft. And the two main items that need to be addressed are having some predictable and defensible criteria as when to when planned commercial zoning should be applied for as an alternative to straight or standard commercial zoning. And then we also think we need to expand the criteria for review and approval and denial of site plans. And so those are the things that staff is going to focus on. And so what we would do during that period is to put out some, we'll call them trial balloons along those lines. One possibility is to focus on our neighborhood centers and our gateways as identified in the comprehensive plan. The other thing is that we would probably send out for your review and comment as well as a development community having some criteria so that applicants know in advance and can have some confidence that when they submit a site plan, that these are the criteria that the Planning Commission will be looking at, or the City Commission. And if it comes to fact that neighborhood centers are the place where we focus on planned commercial zoning, then we would want to incorporate some of the neighborhood center criteria into that review. And so our recommendation, I think at this point and what we heard, would be at this time to continue this item to your September 19th meeting. And if we get feedback, we got about halfway through some material that we wanted to cover, but if the -- if you thought that was productive as we develop a modified draft, if you think it's productive to have a follow-up study session on the same topics, we would be glad to do that.
I would certainly call for a follow-up study session so we could complete them. I think that there were things that weren't questions, there were more statements that we heard. So I think we really need to go back and finish the discussion.
Okay.
And Dean, a question to that, would you envision a study session at the September 5th meeting or at the September 19th?
I think we would anticipate it at the September 19th meeting to give us some additional time to address those two items, the criteria and the -- for when it's used and the criteria for review and approval. And that, those two things, I think, could be discussed in the study session.
Mr. Chairman, would the -- would the commission be willing to extend or I won't say postpone, but postpone this item until October 3rd? To me, if we have a study session on the 19th, and there are really things that we learn and discover during that meeting, then we leave it and come right out to the commission meeting and it doesn't give us any chance to really again modify it.
Well, I think, I think we'd just be postponing it again, probably.
Right.
Yeah. So I mean, it would make sense if you think that's the sequence that could occur, is that we could complete our drafts, we could have that available for discussion and dialogue on the 19th, and then postpone the actual public hearing on this to October 3rd. That would probably be a better, make everybody have a clear understanding of what the timeframe is and the sequence of events.
The only other thing is that there are some things within the body of this that I had questioned or thought could be augmented or something like that. And I don't know when we're going to deal with that, but should we send those or email those?
You could, you could email those, or you could, if you've got them marked there, you could make note of that in the record for the minutes so that we would be sure to follow up on those. But we would certainly want to focus on the six-page draft itself, anything that you want further clarification on or have questions about.
Right. I just had, you know, some thoughts and things that have come to light over like a development plan, a site plan. There's a few things not included as requirements that we've consistently asked for, which I think the whole point of this is to clarify what we really want. So I just made a note of several things that I thought should be actually added to the requirements. So I think if anyone else has anything like that, they should forward that to Mr. Andrew.
Yes, we would appreciate getting this.
For example?
For example, color on an elevation plan. We've consistently asked for color. That doesn't exist in this amendment as far as specifically saying color. But every single time someone has questioned colors, and I mean, I've heard this brought up repeatedly. So if the consensus is from the development communities that we need to be specific in these requirements, then we need to be specific. So if you have thoughts about what it is that we've asked for...
So on page four, it calls for preliminary sketches of building elevations depicting the general size and exterior construction materials of the buildings proposed. That item doesn't say color.
Right.
So that, that could be modified to include color.
That's why I added color, for example.
Yeah.
That's at the top of page four of the draft.
Mm-hmm. Because whenever we've seen black and white elevations, we've asked for specific color explanations. Whether or not that's what they want to give us, that's what we've asked for. So I would say that we should send any of those requests to Dean so that he can add that to his list of things to do.
And are you thinking before a given date, September 5th or no?
Before the study session.
Okay.
So if, if Mr. Box wanted to so proceed with that motion, we've given you options there, the 5th or 19th, but I think his idea makes sense to postpone the public hearing to October 3rd and to try to schedule a follow-up study session on this subject on September 19th.
I'm going to make the motion, but I want to be sure that it's not going to include prior to the 19th, it's not going to include those, those suggestions. Those are, those are things that we're making unofficially. But officially, I'd like to move that we postpone Z-17-5 until the October 3rd meeting.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to postpone Application Z-17-5 until our October 3rd meeting. Any discussion? If not, all those in favor, aye please?
Aye.
Aye? Any opposed? Motion carries. Well, I did want to ask, this is a public hearing, was there anyone here to speak on this particular subject? Because we would love to entertain more dialogue. If not, we'll close that item. Administrative items, number 4.1 is application number P-17-1A filed by Sean Kindlesbarger requesting approval of a replat of lots 1 through 8, Block 15 of the Elm Del addition, which is actually located at the southeast corner of West Elm Street and North Chicago Avenue.
We have on the screen for you there a, a box around the area in question. You can see there in the southwest corner of the site, a warehouse building. That warehouse building has been demolished, so it's been removed since this photo was taken. And if you've been by the site, it has essentially been cleared. But what we're dealing with is a fairly obsolete plating arrangement where we had lots that were platted with only a 35-foot lot width. And from what we can tell, there was a warehouse building constructed in 1949, and it has historically been used as a roofing warehouse. That was demolished earlier this year. And what Mr. Kindlesbarger would like to do is to reconfigure these lots for resale and redevelopment. And so we've got 280 feet of frontage on Elm and 142 and a half feet deep with rear alley. And he wants to create three 60-foot lots and one 100-foot lot on the corner to account for the additional setback. Both Elm and Chicago are public streets. They have platted public right-of-way. They are paved, but they don't meet our current urban street design standard. But we do believe they provide adequate access to the site for its intended use. There is a water line in Chicago Street, but not along Elm. And so Mr. Kindlesbarger would be responsible to extend water service to the east to serve the proposed building lots. There are fire hydrants at Chicago and Park and Elm and West Place in the vicinity. There's a 15-inch sewer line in the rear alley and a 10-inch line in Elm Street, and these could be tapped into if needed by businesses. This property drains to the south to inlets at the Chicago and Park Street intersection. And the runoff that's collected there drains straight west under Broadway to the Old Dry Creek Channel. And that is a good point of discharge, so we don't see any need for any other stormwater measures. We have good response time for fire and police emergency response. And there's no new easement or right-of-way dedications proposed or being requested by utilities. So our recommendation is to approve this plan to take eight skinny lots and repackage them into four more usable and sellable lots. And this would be, have a separate name as the Dakota addition to the City of Salina. I believe Mr. Kindlesbarger's here if you have questions of him, but we'd be happy to address any technical questions you have about the plat. But it's really, this is just an exercise in repackaging some obsolete lot arrangements.
Thank you, Mr. Andrew. Are there questions for staff?
Yes. Has there been a drainage study down the area?
There has not been a drainage study.
Don't you think that if there's a lot of asphalt going to be there or roof, that it's going to produce over and above the limits of the capability of the drainage system?
We do not, no. Because it, there was already development on this site, and it was not doing it at that time. And then he's not intensifying the use of the property.
But if he's going to have four buildings and four parking lots as opposed to one building, and I presume his, he will have to have, he will have to pave the, his parking lots?
He will not. It's zoned I-2.
I-2.
So it is optional for him whether he wishes to pave those or not. But the, one of the things we look at is if there is a receiving place for the stormwater runoff that has adequate capacity. And we have inlets and a very large storm sewer pipe that carries the runoff from the Park Street intersection over to directly underneath the viaduct and over to West Dry Creek. So I don't know if you can expand the view at all, John, to show that? Maybe the, I mean, have a broader view so that we can see West Dry Creek? So this is, this is the stormwater pipe. It's an adequately sized pipe that collects the water here and takes it underneath the viaduct over here to the old Dry Creek Channel. And the primary reason we would require stormwater detention is if the development was going to overload the capacity of either the collection system or the receiving point. And basically, this is, this old Dry Creek Channel is essentially a linear detention pond. And so his detention is going to be in this linear basin there.
Other questions? Mr. Kindlesbarger, do you have anything to say?
I don't have any further at all.
Any questions for Mr. Kindlesbarger, from the commission?
No. We do want to note, there's a couple, and we have that as a condition, but I'll be getting with you, Sean, about some, just some technical things to the plat. Your, your surveyor listed CNS, the previous owner, as the people who'd be signing this plat. And so there's some things like that that'll have to be corrected before it gets signed. But we think this is in order for your action.
I am ready. I would move that we approve then Case P-17-1A, recreating the Dakota addition as described.
It's been moved and seconded to approve Application P-17-1A, known as the Dakota addition. All those in favor, vote aye please?
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? Motion carries.
Did we allow for public comment? And is there anybody from the public who would have commented?
It's an administrative item.
Oh, that's right.
But we can allow for --
No, thank you.
If anybody wants to speak about this, Mr. Kindlesbarger does not.
Yeah.
I like the name Dakota.
You're right. You're right.
Application number CP-17-1A, which is filed by Westar Energy requesting approval of a replat of the Salina Industrial Park subdivision to create a separate 48.45-acre lot for Westar Electrical Substation. This is at the northeast corner of Old Highway 81 at South 9th Street and Farley Road in Saline County to be platted and known as the subdivision there.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This just gives us an opportunity to educate our current members on an interlocal agreement we have with Saline County that has not been frequently used in time, at least in recent years. But we have an agreement between Saline County and the City of Salina for cooperation and coordination in the approval of subdivision plats within three miles of the city limits. And so there is a process for that, an agreed process that we've set out. And in this case, the, the city gets the first review. But as we, we pointed out, in October of 1987, there was a rezoning request approved to rezone this corner of Old Highway 81 and Farley Road south of Phillips Lighting from agricultural to heavy industrial. That was subject to satisfactory plating of the property. This property at the time was outside, but it was within three miles of the city limits. And so it was referred to the Planning Commission for review and comment. And the Planning Commission had favorable comments about the proposed plat. The county Planning Commission met and approved the preliminary plat. There was a time extension granted to submit the final plat. And it took a while, but in 1991, the Planning Commission reviewed the proposed final plat of the property. And the plat was creating essentially a single industrial site containing 153 acres. And so maybe if you could blow that up a little bit, John, just for additional detail. But the primary features of the plat were platted restricted access along Old Highway 81, except for an approved opening, a 170-foot wide drainage easement along the north end for, to accommodate a potential need for stormwater detention. And then there was a requirement or a note on the approval that prior to the sale of any portion of the property, the property shall be replatted. And so where we are today is we've had no development at all occur on this site since the plat was approved in 1991. And Westar Energy has a contract or option to purchase the north 48 acres of this property. And they want to construct a major electrical substation on the site. And so as we noted under the original conditions of approval, if any portion of this property is sold off, Lot 1, Block 1 must be replatted. And so the primary difference between then and now is that due to annexations that have occurred, the city limits has moved closer to this property, and it is now within one mile of the city limits, which means it requires both City Planning Commission and County Planning Commission approval. We've made a note at the top of page three that there was a proposal to change the subdivision name from Salina Industrial Park to the Farley subdivision. We now understand and will let the applicant clarify that there, now that plan is to leave the existing name in place, so then the name would become the replat of the South Salina Industrial Park subdivision. So as far as street access, the original plan had a single restricted access opening along Old 81. This revised plat shows an access opening for Lot 1, the substation lot, and a separate access opening for the rest of the property. We, we made some notes. The substation itself does not need water supply, but any future development of Lot 2 would need to be served by a public water supply. There is a 24-inch main that runs down the west side of Old 81 Highway, and that serves the sleep-in, but it stops there. And so that would need to be extended south to serve any industrial development on the south 105 acres. Again, the substation doesn't need sewer service, but there would be a need for sewer service to have industrial development of Lot 2. The general pattern in this area is for water to migrate from north to south. The original plan had about a five-acre pond, 10 feet deep, with a pump station near Old Highway 81. That plan was never acted on since there hasn't been any development on the site to trigger construction of that pond, so there is nothing in place today. Westar Energy has submitted a drainage report prepared by Burns &amp; McDonald engineers. That study really focuses on the runoff from the substation site and not from the remainder. And just from our initial review, it appeared that a pond was proposed, but it was outside the 170-foot drainage easement. And then Wayne Nelson, our civil engineer for the city, had some additional concerns about the drainage report, which he outlined in the attached memo. We don't have any concerns about the actual lot split as proposed. We do have some recommended conditions on page four of your report. And the first of those is that the detention pond designed for Lot 1 be modified to fit within the existing drainage easement, or the drainage easement needs to be modified to conform with the location and shape of the detention pond. And that needs to be clarified before this goes to the City Commission. That no building permits be issued until the plans and specifications for those drainage facilities have been approved. And we indicated in Item 3, public water and sanitary sewer lines shall be extended at developer expense. That should relate solely to the development of Lot 2, not the substation lot, because the substation doesn't need public water or sanitary sewer. We're carrying over the condition about no driveway connections to Farley Road until arrangements have been made with Saline County for upgrading that road. And on behalf of the city engineer, we're requesting that a revised drainage study be submitted for the city engineer to review. And then we had some technical corrections on the plat itself, some of which have been made. We received a revision before the packet went out and addressed a number of those. So you have the memo there from Mr. Nelson, and he's working with the applicant and their engineers to address some of those things. We have David Neal here, Saline County Planner, who we are doing this review concurrently as a city-county venture, so he'd be here to address any questions or make comments from the county's perspective. But we don't have any concerns about the lot split itself. We just want to make sure that the original conditions are carried over. And we had some concerns that the pond, this is the 170-foot drainage easement, and there were some references to a pond that was outside of that here. And so either this, it needs to be located within this easement, or the configuration of the easement needs to be changed if there's a desire for a different detention pond location. So with that, we'd be open to any questions that you have of a technical nature. If you have any questions about the county's role, Mr. Neal's here to address that. And then we do have representatives from Westar here. And I think, John, do we have that? So the representatives from Westar have some, a presentation they'd like to make to you as well.
Thank you, Mr. Andrew. Are there questions first for staff? And who is representing Westar?
Katie is going to present that.
Could you approach your name and address, please?
Katie Walbridge, Speaker of Kansas, Westar Energy.
Thank you.
Thank you. Can you guys hear me okay?
Okay.
Okay. So with this lot split, we are proposing a substation. Can you please go to the next slide? Thank you. So I just wanted to give you guys a quick project overview, because I know substations, I mean, you drive by them every day, sometimes you just don't know why they're there and why we need them. So first is why we need them. So the current substation site, you can see it just kind of straight above my pen on that property. That is our current substation site. We refer to this as the N.A. Phillips Substation. Right now, it has reliability issues just due to the configuration, when it was built, and just the age of the equipment. We are having reliability issues, and that substation serves the N.A. Phillips plant. So we need to update that. And then there's also a, there's going to be some updates just to the transmission system in south area of Salina and Saline County. And so this is kind of part of a bigger project, and this is the step one of that project. As far as the location, you can't really see it from the aerial, but there are transmission lines coming straight in from the west and straight in from the east to that existing substation. So we prefer to stay near our lines so we don't have to rebuild transmission lines either in a new area or we can do, we, we just want to stay close to them. That way we have minimum rebuild. So that is one of the benefits. Another benefit is a willing seller. So we approach sellers with an option to purchase. We, through that option to purchase, we go through and get all of our permitting that we need. And then after that, we are able to buy the property if that all goes through. Another benefit of this is the location. So kind of from this Google Earth image, our location is, there's that imaginary line that kind of goes about a third of the way down across the property, and that's about our property line. Thank you. Okay. So you can kind of see it. There's like this imaginary line. So that was kind of our area that we decided that would be a good substation spot. It's about roughly 48 acres, 825 feet from the north to the south. So the rest of that property, we plan on remaining as green space. We are building outside of the drainage and utility easement, because even though we're a utility, I don't think that technically is what that is made for. But we will revise our drainage report to put that detention basin within the drainage easement. Typically, we try to stay out of the public easements, because even though you're the first ones there, someone always wants to come through it later. And so, but we had that request, and that should not be an issue. So we will revise that to be in the drainage easement. This also, this site will allow future growth. We had no intentions to build outside our fence line that we are proposing today, but within the fence line, this does allow for future growth for the proposed industrial park if that comes to fruition. So that will be a nice benefit of having it right there. The last thing is the schedule. So this has to be, well, it doesn't have to be, it's planned to be in service by the spring of 2021. So we are planning to start construction in 2019. So we have about a, about a year and a half before... So we have about a, about a year and a half before major construction would start. Next slide, please. So this shows the layout that we originally proposed. This is the pond that was in question. Right here is that edge of that drainage easement. It's a little bit hushed, you can't quite see it, I think that's that dark line. So we are planning on rotating that pond up into that drainage easement. The pond today roughly is about a hundred-and-twenty feet by eighty feet by about four feet deep. So, it'll fit perfectly in that area, that should not be an issue. This is our proposed access. We have our ditches. One of the requests from the landowner was that, and we wouldn't do this anyways, but to not add additional water, because we are putting a, you know, a solid site there, gravel with an AB-three base layer, not add additional runoff to their property to the south. And so we are having concrete ditch liners to help with this site, because it is very, very flat. So, we're, we're pretty excited about the design. We haven't used these concrete ditch liners in a while, so that'll be a fun project. And then, as I said, this will drain up into this detention pond up here. Yes, we added the dedicated entrance. The construction of the pad will remain outside of the easement, as I pointed out, and the pad itself, and when we refer to as the pad, we are referring to as fenced-in area. So that's going to be five-hundred feet by five-hundred feet. So it's about five-point-seven acres of the forty-eight acre property that's actually going to be fenced in. So we're going to have a lot of extra green space. Next slide, please. This just kind of shows an example photo of another substation. This substation is actually in Topeka. There is the good, this, this serves the Goodyear Plant in Topeka. This stuff back here is actually the plant itself, but you can see the equipment on the inside. Over here, we have a little bit of additional equipment that won't be going into this sub, but right here is kind of the general layout of our substation. So with that, do you guys have any questions for me or any clarifications?
First of all, what is your role with Westar?
I am the civil engineer for the substation department.
And that's why concrete ditch liners are a fun project.
Yeah. We, this is, we, this is our second project that we've designed them on, and I will be honest, this is, this is one of the flattest sites we've ever had, and so we're kind of excited to see how those concrete ditch liners work.
Well, when it gets done, I want to tour. I'm dying to see concrete ditch liners. It's fun.
Could you charge your mission?
I'm sure.
I have a couple of questions.
Yes.
That seems like a lot of generous space, and I heard you refer to it as green space. My experience is, is that open space, even though it be green space, tends to collect things. Any plans for storage of poles here, or other equipment to be used in emergency bases, yada, 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 yada?
We don't have any, other than in construction, there might be a little bit of storage back there, just for construction. We have no intentions to use this as a storage facility. We actually have a really great leasing program, so any property that we, if we buy it, so sometimes people don't want to split their property. So, you know, it could be a situation where we'd have to buy the whole hundred-and-twenty acres, or whatever it is, a hundred-and-forty-some acres. In that case, we would likely lease back the, well, we would lease back the property to a farmer. Usually, it's the previous landowner or their tenant, so that area will probably be leased back.
My concern was, it just isn't going to be a storage area for more concrete pond liners.
No, we will have, yeah. We will have some, we will have some transmission lines, so this gives us the opportunity to do all of that, those transmission lines within our property, and not have to go back and affect the neighboring landowners. But we, our vegetation management crew doesn't want to have to maintain all those extra sites either, so it's actually a benefit for us to lease the property back in. So, actually, we have a very good program, so. Do you guys have any other questions?
Other questions?
Yes, you mentioned the, your upgrades, future upgrades to Salina. Will that include taking down the overhead power lines on South Ninth Street?
South Ninth Street. I don't know about the overhead power lines.
In front of Walmart and Lowe's.
The right, here's the right answer.
I, everything, let me, let me pull up my little map.
Are you referring to the tall transmission line that runs diagonally through there?
No.
The ones that?
One on the corner.
Are you talking about the substation that's at the corner of Ninth and Schilling?
Yes.
I'm talking about down all of Ninth Street.
The majority of this project, looking at my image, it's mainly south of Magnolia. There's a substation just a few blocks north of Magnolia that is affected, and then the majority of this major project is south of Magnolia. Does that make sense?
That's exactly what I'm talking about. So will those lines be underground?
To build a transmission line underground, it has to be big and deep. So we, that is a one-fifteen KV line, and so that is what we consider transmission. Typically, our underground lines are the twelve KV lines that serve like distribution purposes, so we would actually have to take up more room by putting it underground than we would by having it overhead.
It does appear to be an eyesore, those lines.
It looks like that line is getting upgraded. I can take those concerns back to our, that's a different department, but I can take those concerns back to our transmission group and see what they, what they're, what they say. Does that work?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, we all agree. Technology will change, and life will change, and we want to see that.
Our new pole designs are typically monopoles, so it's just one pole structure. I think those might be two pole structures now, and they do look, they're more appealing to the eye.
I don't, I don't like poles at all, but I like living in darkness a lot less.
For the benefit of the commission, if there is a streetscape, and the streetscape project involves the burying of existing overhead lines, usually that cost is borne by the city of Salina as part of the streetscape project and not, not by Westar, unless they, it's beneficial to them to have them buried. But if we have a streetscape with overhead power lines, it's usually up to the city to pay to have those buried.
At a very great expense, I'm sure.
At a very great expense, you are correct.
And what is the pole that is in front of, the chicken restaurant place? Chick-fil-A. Chick-fil-A. The place for the great landscaping.
Tornado siren, which is the ugliest pole that I've ever seen.
Solar sort of thing on it? Panel thing?
Perhaps. We've, we've reconfigured our emergency sirens around the community, and a lot of them were placed in the public right-of-way instead of on private property. I can't, I'd have to check my map to see if that's one of them.
I think it is.
I think it may be a, an emergency warning siren.
Okay, we'll excuse that one.
Okay, I appreciate that. I can't do much about that one.
Because it is pretty big. Anything else that we'd like to ask Ms. Walbridge today? No?
Thank you, guys, I appreciate it.
Enjoyed the?
Perfect.
So for our benefit, Mr. Neal, what is the next, if they pass on this today, what is the next step with this application?
I'll start with, yes, that pole is one of the emergency management.
Thank you.
Tornado sirens. It's solar-powered. It has to be bigger to withstand the winds, so that we have to be able to alert the citizens. But it's a much, I'd have to refer you to emergency management, but it's a much better system than what's currently in Salina, and fortunately, there was some grant funding that supported that. So, sorry, we do, it's one of those necessary evils.
I just, yeah, it's always good to learn new things.
And yes, it is solar-powered, so it can, in case Westar goes down, it still runs.
Survive.
As far as next steps, it does have to go, because this is a replat, it will have to go to the city commission for approval, for accepting the easements, and checking for any right-of-way dedications, which there aren't any on this. After that, it will go September, I'm going to get the date wrong, September fifth, I believe, is our planning commission, county planning commission meeting. Once the county planning commission gives the approval, it goes to the county commission for the final approval, and then it's recorded and done.
Questions for Mr. Neal?
Thank you, sir.
Did you have one? No, I was trying not, I was trying not to make a political comment.
Okay. And so, this is.
Congratulations, Commissioner Boxer.
We appreciate that.
This is a, a process by which the, the city and county have agreed to share and coordinate their review, and so we appreciate that.
Excellent. Any other discussion on this, or questions?
Is that correct, that we're going to call this back to Salina Industrial Park?
Yeah, I forgot too. That was an internal request from our real estate department.
Okay. Replat of Salina Industrial Park, so, okay. So we won't, we won't make any reference in our motion to the Farley subdivision that it will be a replat of the Salina Industrial Park, so.
Does the motion need, you want to recite those stipulations in your, in the motion?
Yeah, we would want to include, incorporate those four conditions into the approval.
And those are located on Page Two, is that correct?
Page Four.
Those are, am I unable to count?
Page Four.
Excuse me, I got the wrong.
Yeah, there's five, with the, with the revisions that need to be made, and one of those revisions would be changing the title on the plat.
That's the fourth of this back part there.
Something else?
Jump right in there, then.
So it appears on Page Four of your report, and it does say, "We would recommend approval of the proposed replat of the South Industrial Park, subject to those five conditions."
Is that your motion?
I was, I was so moved.
You moved that?
I was waiting for something. I can be a little more articulate.
I would move that we approve application CP seventeen dash one, one A, as of this date, eight-five-seventeen, with the conditions asserted by staff on Page Four of the application.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve application number CP dash one-seven dash one-point-one A, with the five. Conditions recommended by staff. Any discussion? Not? All those in favor, vote aye, please.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Okay. So what we'll do is, we'll provide you a letter indicating that you got your approval today and copy, Mr. Neal, and just in case he forgets, and then we'll, we'll move forward, so.
It's nice to see a woman engineer, thank you.
Yes, thank you for visiting Salina.
Yeah, we had a nice trip today.
Excellent, enjoy it.
Salina is flat, you're going to find it.
Anything else?
For other matters, Mr. Boxer correctly observed that we removed a notice of rezoning sign today from a property on South Ohio. And if you recall, at your last meeting, you voted to recommend denial of a site plan, and upon that action, the applicant did what they should have done before that date, which was to withdraw their application, which they have done, and their application is closed out. So if they wish to do anything on that property, they will have to refile and start over. And then, they are exploring the possibility of attempting to acquire additional property there, including the, the site of that building to the rear, and so we will allow them to move through that process and see if they're successful with that or not, but that case is closed, and it will, if something happens there, it will start all over again and come back to you, and neighbors will be notified as, as suggested by Mr. Bafa. We're looking at perhaps sending a letter to the neighboring property owners, explaining to them that the application has been withdrawn, and that they will be notified if it's refiled, so that they know what the status of that project is. There were two things that, well, there was a prior action, and then two things that occurred last night's city commission meeting. The city commission had adopted a new ethics policy for themselves and for the other boards and commissions that are appointed by them, and it, I wouldn't call it anything much different or new, it actually puts them more on par with the bylaws that the planning commission already operates under. But there were two actions they took last night, one of which was before board and commissioner orientation was offered, and sometimes there was participation, sometimes there wasn't, but they, they have made it mandatory that if someone accepts an appointment to the board, that they need to attend an orientation in order to serve on a city volunteer board. And then the other aspect, which I believe we were trying to do each at least once a year, to have a, a steady session or a refresher for the, each board on rules and procedures and policies, so that has become mandatory. It was something we were already doing with the planning commission, but less so with Heritage Commission, Design Review Board, Board of zoning appeals. So, for planning commissioners, I don't think that will change much, because we've always had at least one steady session a year where we go over roles and responsibilities, but that has become mandatory for all boards, as has the orientation. So, you may, you may hear more about that. The other, we haven't decided whether it'll be the third or the seventeenth, but each year as part of National Community Planning Month, we have tried to have a landscape awards ceremony. We've heard positive things about the Chick-fil-A landscape plan, but if there are other projects that you have seen that you feel are notable, please bring those to our attention.
I wanted, I'm glad you brought that up, because I wanted to state the fact that the landscape at, what is that, a quick shop that's out of the end of Crawford?
Centenary in Crawford.
Yeah, we talked about that having died out, and, you know, that looks fabulous now. I mean, how they've kept that up this summer.
Pine trees died out, and they replanted.
It looks really, really nice there.
Chick-fil-A's pine trees, some pine trees have died too.
Yeah, there, I mean, it was a difficult year, I'm sure, for people, but that really, really looks good, coming into Salina from Crawford and the interchange there.
I have a question, back to the property on South Ohio Street. My, my observation is, is that there is a structure back there, I think it was apartments, that is now landlocked. I mean, there's no all, all surface road there. It appears that the property is, has no occupants, but doesn't it still need to have some sort of egress for fire and emergency vehicles?
We are attempting to work with the contractor for the landowner. We originally tried to work with the demolition contractor, we're now working with the contractor for the landowner, but our fire code does require that there be an all-weather surface capable of supporting an ambulance or fire apparatus to, to get back there. There is a resident who does live in the, a portion of that building, and so we also learned that it was a church contacted us and said they were meeting in one of those buildings, and we were not aware of that. So, there's no doubt that there needs to be access back there at a minimum of an all-weather surface capable of supporting an emergency vehicle.
I thought you were already on that, I'm just curious.
We're on it, but we're not getting anything done as fast as we would like. So, we appreciate everybody's time and participation in the study session today. It's not always easy, but we think dialogue is good, and we're, staff is sometimes in between, but we're, we do our best to facilitate and be responsive, and we, we worked very hard to, to catalog what our other peer communities in Kansas are doing, and we would appreciate sharing some of the additional of those findings, but we did note that of all those cities that we listed, only Junction City does not have landscaping regulations that require landscaping with new development. So, we are, we were one of the earlier ones, but most of our communities, even including western Kansas, have joined us, so. Western Kansas, have joined us, so.
I, yeah, we, I think we do an excellent job, and staff does an incredible job, and I can't imagine relaxing things like landscaping.
I can't.
Oh, okay, you don't want it?
No, I, I would like to see nothing but native plants.
Oh, well, of course, but I'm saying that I can't imagine relaxing the requirements we have. But native plants are a great thing. And on that note, we'll adjourn.
They're indigenous plants, they're really not native.
Right. Those native plants are more relaxed than the others.
Everything's native to somewhere.